Be here with us and to all the delegations, we're glad you could come, welcome. So, we'd like to call this meeting to order. We have additions, are there any additions? Go ahead, Counselor.
I've got a question for Administration.
Okay.
And it deals with the flower policy for bereavement.
Okay.
And also...
Where do you want that under?
Questions.
Questions.
Okay.
And I'd also like to have an open discussion on MPC as a council.
Can I throw something out on that?
Pardon me?
Can I throw something out on that, Counselor?
Sure.
That's intended to be on your May 28th agenda with some other background there.
The MPC?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You have someone coming to speak to it on then, so I thought we could have that whole discussion then.
Okay.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, can we adopt the agenda? Counselor Salk.
I'm moved to adopt the agenda as outlined.
Perfect, thank you. All in favor? Alright, so we're gonna move right into our delegations. We'd like to welcome one of my favorite people, Kara Baldwin. We're so happy y'all could come and everyone that's come with her. Go ahead.
Cash and Nick.
Welcome Cash and Nick. Come on up.
Nikki.
Nikki, sorry.
Thank you.
This isn't working out very well, yeah.
Isn't it already in here?
Well, there was a couple things I had. This is, uh, this looks a little new.
Oh, it looks a little different. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, look, I got the brochures handled.
Awesome. Go ahead.
I'm Nikki Crossfenderboy and...
We have no microphone.
Just give us one second. We gotta hear ya.
Hello? Better?
Go ahead.
My name is Nikki Crossfenderboy and on January 23rd of 1870, Major Eugene Baker and his troops, under the directions of General Phillips Sher- Sheridan of the US Calvary attacked a peaceful Blackfoot camp along the Mar- Marais River, killing approximately 217 people, mostly elders, women, and children. Though, the order was given by General Sheridan, tell, um, tell Baker to strike them hard. Baker was originally looking for a mountain chief camp. However, he found Chief Heavy Runners' camp first. Prior to his expectation, expectations, Baker, Baker was given direct order that Heavy Runner was a peaceful chief and that he and his people were not to be harmed. Although he was clearly informed this was the wrong camp, he attacked anyway. Few, very few survivors, those, oh, survived, those lost were members of the Blackfoot Confederacy. Some of the survivors, descendants, live in Cartson and on the Blood Reserve. After reading the story and account, account of the Baker massacre in 19, oh, 1870, where the approximately 217 peaceful Blackfeet people, oh, Blackfeet people were killed, our class began discussion about why none of us had ever heard about the massacre even, though some of the descendants of the survivors lived in Cartson and attending CHS. This, this then led to discussion and planning for the monument dedicated to the, to the losses Nitsitapi have historically suffered because of the residential schools as well as the Baker massacre because it will be an important reminder for, for, oh, reminder for, of those loss and the tragedies and to make sure that this never happens again.
Alright, so that's, uh, my name's Cassius Hungrowolf, by the way. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
That's a little bit of the history on the Baker massacre. Our teacher Kara Baldwin started this eight, uh, work experience kind of group with a bunch of Blackfeet students from our school and we decided to call it the Youth Nitsitapi Group. And it's kind of just, um, a bunch of young kids working together to kind of fix what textbooks say about us. So nowadays, you know, there's textbooks talking about Indians this and Indians that and they think this and that. And Kara wanted to, um, start a project to see if the youth agreed with the textbooks and stuff. And so she got all of our point of views from everything about teachers to home living and stuff. And during that, we decided to come up with a project to kind of, um, like focus our, our acts. And so she found this, um, what's Ramona's thing called?
It's like, she had written an article on...
Yeah, so Ramona Bighead, is that her name? Yeah, Ramona Bighead wrote an article on the Baker massacre. And, uh, in the article, she states that, um, you'll never learn about this in a textbook. And so, uh, Ms. Baldwin wanted us to, uh, have people start learning about the Baker massacre and stuff. And so one of the ways we can do it is by making this, um, monument in memory of the Baker massacre and, uh, those of its descendants who now live in our community today to be able to see stuff like that, so.
Thank you.
So, and they're being modest though. So the students designed it. They thought about what they wanted on there. And we wrote a poem and stuff. And so what we're asking the committee here is for your support in seeing this through and getting this built and put into Cartson. We think that it'll be a really, really key message of hope, resiliency, and reconciliation as well. And so we, the handout just shows you the design. So we've been working with Remco and that's who designed the Senataph. And we've got some renderings of kind of the look. We did meet with an elder today and talked about the three different locations that would've been discussed prior to this. And, um, she's, she felt strongly about the location just across the street from the school board and where the old, used to be the, the old tourist hut there. For her, it was a connection to the land, connection to the water, and the Baker massacre happened right along a river. And, uh, the idea of having that connection to there. And also, we talked about having it facing east towards the sun, having it rise. But as, uh, people come through into town from the south where it happened to have that memory. But we tied it to the residential schools as well because the Blackfeet, uh, community and that have had so much loss. And we wanted students, descendants, their descendants to all remember. And it doesn't matter what happened in a tech, what's said is in a textbook, we'll have that memory there, so.
Thank you, yeah. That's awesome. Any questions?
Yes.
Counselor Barnes.
So have you got a price tag on this yet?
Yeah, so, uh, we just talked to Remco today and they said possibly about $75,000. We've, we're presenting to the school board on Thursday to see about getting some financial support from the school board. And we're hoping to be able to be invited to Chief and Counsel if we can to try to get some support there. And the handout that we gave you will tweak it as we go, we get more information and also the Blackfoot translations. But we want to hand this out to the, at Native Honor Night to get support from families and stuff there as well and kind of get the, maybe some fundraisers to try to get some financial support for it.
Thank you, Counsel Salk.
So, in terms of the location, are you talking about putting the monument on the east side of that? So it's facing east or...
There's a portion that is asphalted, a portion that is grass.
Yeah.
So the portion closest to the bridge has asphalt. The portion towards, uh, the east has more grass.
I guess from my perspective, if you put it on the east side of that spot, it's more prominent in terms of people seeing it from the highway as they come into town.
Yeah.
As opposed to being on the other side where it'd be hidden by the bridge, which you don't want, neither do we.
Sorry, I should, I should clarify that. I meant, sorry, that the monument would be turned. I don't think it's where, it's the way it's facing, turned, the monument itself. The front of the monument facing, because normally I would think driving, having the front of the monument facing the road. But that would be actually where it would say the Baker massacre, the dates, and then the residential schools. And then the other side would have a poem and also translated in English and also in Blackfoot. So, and then two benches as well to sit. So we do have, uh, one of the students that wasn't able to make it tonight doing an art piece for the two benches that kind of mirrors the poem that would be on there.
And the material would be granite and bronze, is that what it is?
Yeah, we're also looking though, this, they, she did say that the statue, if it was made just as statue, not bronze, would be cheaper. So they are looking at that as well, so, to do a mold cast and stuff. And the idea with the buffalo and adding the calf is symbolic of the separation of the families and the children from their families with the residential schools. And also, it was mostly women and children that were killed in the massacre, so.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
When do you have, um, the idea of this coming to light? What's your timeline?
That was up to me yesterday. Um, I, I'm not sure. This is something I...
Realistically?
Yeah, realistically, I've never done this before. I've never been, uh, part of finding funding and grants and all of that sort of thing. So I'm, I'm hoping that you guys will help direct me and direct this group and help us figure out what is a realistic timeline? What, what can we do to speed up the timeline, I guess? Because most of the students that were involved in this are in grade 12, um, so they'll be graduating this year. But we want them to come back for...
Counselor Court.
Yeah, realistically, you're probably still looking for a year away to get your grants and pace and everything else. Is there somebody else that's gonna be up here because you're moving, you're changing jobs? Will be somebody else up here driving it as well? Are you gonna try and wear two hats while you're down there?
So I just found out today that I got a new position at the McGrath Elementary School Vice Principal. I will ensure that somebody is here as well as, I, I still have been very passionate about it. I still am from here. And, and so I think it'll, it'll be both.
Because there needs to be one person pushing it, pushing, pushing.
Yeah, yeah.
Counselor Bengry.
Kara, have you already spent $580 for the design and stuff? Because it states in the bottom of this handout, it's $500, $580 for the art and design. Has that been spent already?
I have not spent a dime yet, um, so I'm not sure where that, yeah, I'm not sure. And Ken Peterson is the contact that I've been with. He would've been here tonight, but he was busy, so.
Maybe that question is more for Jeff because it's of administrative nature. Jeff, I'm wondering, the Community Foundation has special grants for special projects. Is that something we should try to contact them and see if it would fit under the extraordinary categories that they have?
So, Council just needs to decide the town's level of involvement?
That's right.
Not purely from a capital point of view, but do we want to jump in and start to try and align and arrange grants as well?
Yes.
And that may be a role we can help play, right? And so, um, yes, I think that's an appropriate request, by the way, to answer your question.
Yeah.
We just need to decide the level of involvement on this.
Yeah, because I do have some extraordinary grant. Then I think that project might fit under it. I mean, it would still require in, uh, money, funds from the Blood Tribe, ourselves, and...
County.
So, I guess that's my question is, so are, what, what part does Western School Division have in this? And have you hit up the county as well?
Um, we haven't talked to the county, so we have met with Ken Summerfelt and Anna Frank, the school board member. And they were excited about it. And so we're going to present to them on Thursday and to find out what type of funding and stuff that they would support with this, so, yeah.
Awesome. And, go ahead, Mayor.
Ramona was saying that she also feels that the descendants, uh, of that time period might be interested in helping with fundraising.
Yeah, so Ramona is one of, Ramona Bighead, the principal at a Kynah High School, is one of the descendants. And so she said even if we need to go and get, you know, $10 from each of the descendants, we'll, we want this built, so. Yeah, yeah.
And, uh, I first of all want to thank you so much with that project. I know you gave me a heads up a few months back and I really was touched by the presentation. And, uh, the reason I was touched, because in the summer, Jeff and I were talking and we were envisioning something like that to recognize the student of the residential schools. And when I saw that, I thought, how interesting that you would have come to materialize that thought for us. So, I want to thank you for that. And I know that the school board was extremely upbeat about the presentation. And I know that you will have support there. And I would hope that this council will support this effort also. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate. Any other questions from Council?
Just one, just a suggestion, maybe. I'm looking, I'm looking up the, I've been out to this place.
Mm-hmm.
I'm looking up the monument. There's really no monument down there. Shelby, there's a, there's a roadside sign.
Yeah.
I wonder if, it wouldn't be worth your while to maybe contact the, the Browning?
Yeah, so, uh, Carol, I can't remember Kara's last name. It's, uh, one of the people that's been really advocating for getting this information, like getting the story back and told. Cassius Grandma Beverly Hungrowolf that met with us today says she's gonna try and contact her, that she's down in Browning there, and someone else that would be really, uh, would want to jump on board with this.
There should be a monument down there too, is what I was saying. So maybe this'll spread out.
Yeah, yeah.
Awesome. Well, thank you. And we're really grateful that y'all came and are a part of this. That's a beautiful thing. It's one thing for a teacher to come up with a good idea and to move forward, but it's, it means so much more when we have youth that have opinions. And we're glad that you're able to be heard today. So thank you. We really appreciate you coming. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
You bet. Anytime.
Yep, see you later.
Alright, our next, our next delegation is Mr. Blaine Jensen. He is from the Historical Society and he's gonna give us an update and a request.
Thank you, I was just asking, thank you very much. I was just asking for them to stay for a moment. Because, uh, as, as a representative of the Historical Society, I think I, I support their ideas and I, I agree with you. When the youth come forward like this, it's, it's really meaningful. So as, if we can help in our, in looking for grants and things like that, we would be supportive of that. And we would be very interested also in having some kind of event or, or presentation during our lecture series, which we have now started.
Great idea.
On this topic and have someone come and present on this to the community. So we would host such a, an event. So we would love to hear that. I would also, as I started my, I planned, as I started my presentation, to tell you an inspiring story of when the first company of the card, uh, Charles or a card came to this town site. And when, when they were here, of course, it snowed the first night they were here. It snowed six months, six inches, I think it was. And when their neighbors, of course, the people from this area saw that and they saw their children walking around without shoes on. They had great compassion on these children and the people that came. And a man who was then to be called Panther Bones came with a bag full of moccasins for the children of the settlers that came here. And they felt so badly that they were running around without any shoes on, so they brought some moccasins. So I thought that was a very inspiring, it's very opposite to the horrific story that you just told. So there are inspiring stories on the other side of the fence as well, so, thank you.
Thank you.
So, that was my introduction to report back to you. Just over a year ago, we came to Council and asked for your input on a strategic plan. And that information that was gathered from actually several hundred people in addition to Council and the county and, and other members has formed a new document which we have called Seeing a Future for Our Past. And this document, which I will, uh, give to Jeff and he can share with you, outlines a five-year plan for the Historical Society to position ourselves and change the way we do things. Our mantra or vision statement is that we have stories that inspire, just like Panther Bones. There are so many stories in this community that are inspiring. And the individuals that live here and have lived here have fought for their own personal freedoms, their cultural, religious, and political freedoms, that they're, it's inspiring to hear these stories. And we have so many of those stories. And we feel that the key part of our society now is to tell those stories. It is not about a facility. It's not about an old stove that sits in the museum. It's about the people who are here, the things that they did and what they, what they accomplished. When you think of even the cabins, or the houses, the card home that was first built, they traveled 20, 25 miles to get the logs, because there, there were no trees here. Not even what is here now. This was mostly planted. So they had to travel that distance to be able to find the trees. They cooperated so that everyone that came got a, a home. And it was cooperative, so everybody was under a roof. And by October, November, everyone was in a home, just in a few months. So those are the stories. Those are the things that we're gonna focus on. And so as we do this, this document will tell you what we've come through, what we've decided on, and how we're going to get there. We have some aspirational vision statements. This is a strategic plan. And this strategic plan is gonna take a lot of work and discipline. I think that'll be one of our biggest challenges, is the discipline, to stay focused on this. But we have the structure in place. We've established strategic committees. And we want to engage the younger people around the community to help us in that visioning. So I wanted to come here and thank you for your support. I will not speak in extensive detail with this. You'll get a copy of that and we would appreciate any support that you would have for that. Some of the outcomes that we, we see on this is that our success factors is that we want to make sure that we have more people that hear these stories. What are the indicators? We have to have metrics, things that tell us that we're actually accomplishing this. So we are establishing right now, within the next month or two, we will have metrics telling us, such as new, new visitors. Right now, through our surveys, we believe it's less than 2% of the community of Cartson County that actually visit the museum and the card home. So, that's a metric we can say, okay, if we're doing our job and telling those inspiring stories, people will come to that. We are launching a lecture series. Our first one was, was last, white, last week. Lynn Rosenvoll spoke of the rededication of the Cartson Temple. We have a whole series that are set up for this year. There are five more lectures. And what's coming out of this, people are coming forward saying, we've got these, these inspiring stories. What about this? What about that? And that's what we want. And so we will put on these presentations for all members of the community. And that helps us in building community for this area. We also have goals for fiscal stability. We will be establishing ways in which, when we have, in the last year and a half, we have established a fiscal, stable plan that allows us to have ends meet. Now, the insurance that came up over the last year, uh, that's gonna kick us in the shins, but we'll find a way around that. And, um, we want to make sure also that you and the town are happy with what's going on. We don't want any more comments about, well, the museum is just full of junk anyway. We don't want to see that anymore. We are going to have several new displays and the display that's in there now is about the influenza of 1918 and 1919. And it was, it's on display on loan from the Galt Museum. But we've also put our local, uh, stories in with that as well. So those are some of the things that we are, are moving forward with. We do want to get more students, post-secondary students, and visitors coming to the center. So we have, we have plans to look at this. And we want to increase the satisfied customers or those that are coming to, that they'll walk away and say, I saw something inspiring. I like that. And that's where, where our, our plan is. That's all I'm going to say as a formal presentation, because I know you've got time and other things on the agenda. And, uh, I will leave it at that and I look forward to seeing you at some of our events.
So I actually have a question. So
Brilliant.
In regards to, so there is an ask in this, is my understanding, is that right? Because in the letter we received, it talks about, you've got a quote for a handrail.
Yes, I was just going to move to that. That's part two of my presentation.
Oh, okay, okay. Go ahead.
And I can jump right into that.
You're good.
Is there, before I move into that, is there anything on this other? Okay.
Thank you.
So...
I, I would like to, because I was at the first presentation from Lynn Rosenvoll and it was excellent. It was terrific. I don't know who else was there. Was anybody else there from here? But it was fabulous. And I look forward to the rest of them. And it was funny because my wife's up in Edmonton and she wanted me to go and, and I was tired that night. Ah, man, I better go though.
No, I gotta go to this.
Well, I woke right up. It was terrific. It was really good. And if, if that's an indication of what they're gonna be like, I'm all, I'm in. I'll be there for the rest of them too. Because there are a lot of inspiring stories. I've been telling my wife for several years, you gotta quit talking about the building and what you got in there and start telling, where did that article come from and tell the story about why it's there.
Yes.
And that's what you're doing now. And I, I say, awesome.
Thank you. Thank you.
Keep it up.
Go ahead.
So, to be able to have better access to this, and this summer, our students are going to be working on defining those stories, and getting us more stories, and put them in a short snippet so we can tell them quickly. But, access into the museum has always been an issue. And we have done significant research on installing an elevator, but we just don't have the means to put an elevator in right now. People that do have mobility issues find even the stairs going up from the, from the entrance, that the banister doesn't quite get you to the top, it gets you to the top step, you're fine. But the next step, you can't get there. So that's why we've gone to this handrail that takes us right up to the top, that matches what's already there, so it looks like it's period. And we are proposing that we do a three-way partnership, if possible. One with the county, with town, and we will also raise a third of the funds for that. The handrail itself, we've gone forward and commissioned it to be built out of Fort McLeod. So we're asking, the ask here is that if you might cover a third of that, up to five hundred dollars, we would appreciate that. It doesn't solve complete accessibility, but it helps.
Awesome, Councilor Sob.
So, Blaine, this is a stop-gap measure, really. What you're looking for is something like we have here, I assume, a chairlift that's
Or an elevator, yeah.
Yeah, or an elevator.
A chairlift, we looked into some chairlifts, and some chairlift companies only do residential, so that we can't use that. And to get something that's here, we would have, we were gonna have to look at something like that, but there's also steps getting up to that point. A wheelchair, still, going in the front entrance isn't the, isn't the answer.
I guess my question is, are we just putting money into this that will eventually tear out and put in a different one anyway?
No.
I don't think we will tear this out.
No.
It will still be assisting people coming in the front doors. The elevator or lift would be through the far side door or the back door. That's where the elevator shaft we're looking at, that would access all three, all, both levels.
Mayor?
Jeff, that question's for you again, because I don't remember the date. Are the, there is a joint donation committee, with the county at this point, in place? Is that in place now or not, or is that next year?
Yeah, I wouldn't call it in place, because you haven't passed
There's no motions yet, right? Okay, so we'll do it Yeah, so we'll do it our way, okay, all right, thank you.
And we already have a donor that has committed our portion of this.
Councilor Court.
Is there nobody in town capable of doing this? You said you went to Fort McLeod to
The iron works, uh, because there's a little bit of spiraling on that, and, uh, it's, it's the same fellow that does the artwork in Levitt. You've seen the big eagle that's out there.
Does he have his company in Fort McLeod now?
Yes.
There's a manufacturing facility there.
Oh, okay, that's what was confusing me.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, we went there first, and they said, well, we would do it over here.
Okay.
So technically
It's his son.
So technically, it is local.
Yes.
Okay, because that's important to us.
Yeah.
Thank you.
As it was to us as well, that's why we saw the stuff in Levitt, and that's where it led us to there.
Any councilors, any other comments in regards to this? Perfect, thank you so much, we appreciate your time, and we'll get back to you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving right along, we have Mr. Nolan Card, and he is going to talk to us in regards to the land use bylaw amendments, please.
Do you want some money too?
Nope. Well, it will cost you some money, I'm sure, in the end. So the, I guess the reason that we're looking at doing some amendments to land use bylaws is because MGA has changed a little bit, and there's four or five things that we have to change just to meet the new, the MGA rules. So when we have it open for those, we can look at some of these other problems that we've been coming across all the time, and see where you guys want to go with those ones. So just a quick overview is, there's some, the MGA rules are timelines and completenesses for permits, applications, posted notices of issuance of permits. We have never done that before, we're gonna have to start doing that. Uh, the PL team changed from fourteen working days to twenty-one days. And the subdivision authority, it outlines better its powers and its duties. Some of the other things that we're fixing is there's some errors in the numbering and lettering, so we're gonna fix that. Uh, some of the distances between building foundations and building evs overhangs don't coincide with each other. So we're gonna make those so they're closer and, uh, kind of make the same distances. And then there's just a few wordings that we have to change where words were left out, or change the name from MPC to Subdivision Development Authority, things like that. Uh, so the first one that we're looking at is C cans in residential area. So I've had a lot of requests on people who want to have C cans in, we've had a few that put them in, and we've made them remove them. Um, George Toon's got two out there right now that he's going to be removing. Steve Gilchrist has had one, and he's had to remove it. So they've, I do have a letter in the back of the parcel, or the package, from Steve Gilchrist, who wants to open it up to have C cans. Jim Tolly has also been in and wanted to be allowed to put a C can in his backyard. So right now, the bylaw lets you have a C can in commercial and industrial, permanent C cans, but it doesn't let you have permanent C cans in residential. Some of the reasons that they turned him down before was because they don't look that nice. When the lots infill and the development goes on, sometimes it gets really hard to get a C can out of the back of somebody's property. Uh, after a few years, they really look rundown. And, um, most municipalities don't allow C cans in residential. Now, um, some of the things, I guess, that we, you know, C cans have changed a lot, so they've, they use them in housing construction now, and motels and other buildings like that. So, I just put a little bit in there about, if we were to decide to allow them, we could maybe make the people, put siding on them, put trusses on them, and make them look like a, a normal shed building. That would raise the cost a little bit, but I think they would still be cheaper than trying to do a full building the same size. So that's one thing that we need to think about, is the C cans. I did put a little bit in there, would they count in accessory buildings coverage? And I think they probably would have to, just because if we allowed them in there, they'd be like an accessory building. Um, the second one that we need to talk about, I guess, is home occupations. So I've attached the Schedule Eight in there for you guys to look at, it's all about the home occupations. It does the occupation one, occupation two, and then general rules. And if, uh, they're not really that clear, so if we want to clarify some of them and add different rules in there to make it a little more clear on home occupations, we could do that. Uh, and the last one is the clear view triangle. So when we updated this bylaw the last time, the clear view triangle got changed, and we didn't even go through and change it, it just came from the other place it got changed. So it got changed from forty feet from the curb center. So if you went to the corner of the curb, you'd go forty feet back on both sides, draw a triangle line across, that was the clear view triangle. So, when Ryan redid the bylaw, he put in what, some of the new places have put in, which is twenty-five feet back on the property line. So you take the corner of the property line, you go twenty-five feet back. It makes quite a bit of difference on how much area it takes away from the yard. So I put drawings in there that show the two lines. If you look at those drawings, you can tell there's quite a bit of difference there.
Nolan, when we talk about that clear view, does that include trees and stuff on the boulevard?
It does, yep.
So it, it, you can't have trees and stuff on your boulevard?
In that twenty-five foot, or forty
Within that area.
Whichever way you go, in that area.
Good.
So I've got, I don't know if you want to look at the pictures, but there's, there's pictures there of Jensen's house, used to be Jensen's house.
Yes.
And pictures of what used to be Reed's house up on, and you can see the difference on it. Um, talking to Brad, he doesn't feel that anything that we have right now in town is obstructing the areas that it doesn't need to obstruct. So he figures that Jensen's place is okay, because you pull up there, you do your stop, and then you creep forward, and you can easily see up this road. That works on the forty foot from the corner, but if you do the twenty-five feet back, it takes out two of those trees. Makes it quite a bit bigger.
How many people creep up to a corner without going through the intersection?
That's what you're supposed to do.
Stop sign there.
Yeah, fine, I got a stop sign on my intersection, and they're in a hurry to get to the temple, and they're gonna run over people.
So my suggestion is to go back to the forty feet, but because it doesn't take up as much as the, of the people's yard.
Right.
Um, and that's the changes that we have, or that we're looking at. I didn't really go into anything in the home occupation parts, because I wanted you guys to look at it and see what you thought.
Councilor Drew, go ahead.
I just had a question about C cans, if I want to put a C can in my backyard, not that I'd be able to fit one in there, but, um, do I need a permit for that? Do I come to the town, get a permit?
Supposed to, yeah.
Not allowed right now.
Right now, it's not, right now, it's not allowed in residential. So you would come in and ask me, and I'd tell you, sorry, you can't have one.
Okay.
Also, I have a question in regards to that as well, so they get, what if the neighbor isn't okay with it, the way it's at right now? Like, if we were to approve it, would the neighbors have a say in it?
If it was permitted, they wouldn't. If it was discretionary use, then it would have to go to the Municipal Planning Commission, and they would have a chance to have a say.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Sob.
So Nolan, no C cans, period, even though there are C cans sitting on people's driveways?
Right, okay, they're, in residential, it is allowed to have a temporary C can that can be there for ninety days, and I can renew it one time.
Okay.
And that's so that they can use it during construction to store stuff in, and supposedly that. Moving, lots of people really abuse that.
Councilor Bengry.
Nolan, I found it interesting in your letter, uh, that people are requesting C cans for vehicle storage. I'm wondering how they're gonna open their doors, they probably have a, a moon roof in it, they have to crawl up the roof and down the back end of the vehicle.
C can's about the width of a trailer, and they put them in trailers, I don't know how they get in and out of them. But, in my opinion, a C can is the worst place in the world to store a car.
That's right.
Mayor Cronin.
Okay, regarding C cans, they're not allowed in residential as it stands. But we do have some residential areas that are listed residential, but they are totally agricultural use. On the east side, behind my house, the zoning is residential, but there are cows and there are horses on that land. And so if it's agricultural, shouldn't then a C can possibly be allowed on a land that is used as agricultural land?
They call that country residential.
No, it, it's actually
Residential.
Zone residential, because when they did the West Area Structure Plan, they wanted that, those areas to be residential eventually, so they re-zoned a lot of them to residential.
Councilor Court.
Does she?
Thank you. We had this discussion ten years ago on C cans.
That's right.
The problem is, and it's, maybe this is where I get my prejudice against them, you drive to Waterton, between Mountain View and Levitt, there's that C can sitting on the side of the hill, they just dumped it there, it's just a mess. So my fear is that we let, allow them into, into the agriculture areas, like you were just talking about, that they're gonna just be, they, they're not an attractive thing. And so if, if we're gonna allow it into town, I just don't like them.
Councilor Bengry.
Nolan, did, did at one time, we had a, a bylaw or a policy in place that you could not have animals within a hundred and fifty feet of a residential property, or something like that?
There still is a bylaw that says there's a certain distance. And so in that area, they had to put in two fences. And they, the one fence was back farther, and that was where the cows couldn't get in, past that fence, to get up to the residential's actual back property. I don't know if it's still there or not, but that was one of the things that they did.
Thank you.
Counsel, yep, Counselor Ryan.
So, um, with, with the notation that you have in there regarding putting siding on them and making them look more like, more attractive, are you looking for an exemption clause to put in there to allow them?
I'm just looking for suggestions of what you guys would rather have and what you want to see. That's just one of the things that they do in a lot of areas, to make them look more like a
Really?
a real building rather than a C can.
Okay, so the thought that I had, you know, on the, the really large lots, I don't have a problem with them, but a reg, a regular residential lot, I, I think that's just, you know, you're, you're inviting problems from neighbors.
Right.
They're gonna complain. But if you get a bigger lot, some of these large lots that are in town, um, you know, I mean, I have a large lot, I have a seven tenths, seven tenths of an acre, but, but I have things on there already that, that were permitted, but I couldn't put one on there now. But I wouldn't want one in my yard, personally.
Nolan, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, like, how would you determine what the size of a large lot is?
Well, Ryan
Would you consider yours large, and, so?
Yeah, well, I mean, Ryan determined that for us, I thought at MPC, I thought he gave us that information on the extra large lots. And you say that there a half an acre or more was considered a large lot?
We did put into the bylaw, regular residential, and it's up to so much size, then large lots, which is from that size to a maximum, and then we have estate lots, which are from that size to another maximum. So, I don't know which one yours fits in, it's zone R1, but it's probably more in the large lot size
Yeah.
of foot square footage.
Yeah.
But frontage, it's not.
Yeah.
So, I guess, I guess the thing I struggle with the most is, what's to stop us from, from me with a smaller yard than, say, you, well, if you can have one, why can't I have one? Like, it's just a question, Councilor Bengry, go ahead.
Nolan, my concern is a lot like Counselor Court's. We shove these things into a, into a property. We use them three months out of the year for storage for our utility sheds and stuff like that. But we have an, an entrance into this community that has several of those C cans and what else on it, and it looks like you-know-what. And that's our west entrance from, from Waterton. And how do you clean that up? Now, who's responsible to clean that property up?
Counselor, or, sorry, Mayor, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand, if you have a property as zone R1, and the use is agricultural, is there a possibility for that portion of land that is R1 but used for agriculture to be reverted to agricultural land? And if so, how would a person go about it?
So there, there's a couple ways, like, right now, when we open the bylaw, you could rezone it back to agriculture, at the same time that the bylaw is open, if you wanted to do that. It then leaves a whole bunch more open for other types of animals to come in there, because it's now zoned agriculture, and we don't have as much control. An owner of the land could apply to have the bylaw open for five hundred dollars and rezone it to agriculture. The other thing we could do, and this is, we could make C cans in residential a discretionary use, The other thing we could do, and this is, we could make C cans in residential a discretionary use, which would then make the miss planning commission look at every case of a C can in residential and decide whether it was used, would be usable there or not, and we could put in conditions of size of lot, what the lot's used for, whether it's got houses on it, all that kind of stuff.
Mayor.
To me, that is a dangerous option because you could then send it to appeal.
Yeah.
And an appeal process costs two hundred dollars for the person who appeals, but more like two thousand dollars for the town.
Yep.
So.
It won't be quite two thousand, but at least a thousand.
But I, I mean, at least five times more than what the person who pays for the
For the appeal.
The appeal. That becomes problematic for, for the town because if one then has it and one is not satisfied with the M P C, uh, ruling, there goes another
Right.
appeal. How many of those can we sustain?
Counselor Barnes.
The only good thing I, when I look at a C can is developing them into a residential area and they really look nice. I've seen some really nice looking ones. But just to dump a C can in your backyard and they start rusting, you can guarantee people are not gonna be painting them up. It's, it's a storage shed. Is really what it is, right? But when you're out in the country and nobody's gonna see you and it's hidden back in the trees, I could care less because I'm not looking at it, right? But to put it in a residential area that's not a designated area where only mobile homes or manufactured homes or C can development, I can't see allowing them within a residential area because I, like the mayor, I can see all kinds of problems with that. There'd be lots of appeals. At least the new appeal board, we get busy, I suppose.
Counselor Sob.
That would be costly.
Okay. I see lots of heads shaking with this, and I think the simplest way to, and I may be jumping ahead here because we have discussion on this later, but a quick straw poll, I think, could put the whole C can thing to bed.
Yep. Started here.
These are just things that I'm throwing out there to have you guys.
I, I understand, I understand Nolan, but, but this particular element of the whole package that you've put there, I think I see a lot of head shaking with this, so I would just be curious.
Ten years, ten years we spent six months on this stupid thing and we said no way and I haven't changed my opinion in ten years.
I myself don't like C cans in residential areas.
That's good.
I think we'll come back to this when we start discussing it. Is there anything else, Nolan, that you had? Yes.
Like I mentioned earlier, there's a delegation that wants to come and speak to the discretion of the M P C in the bylaw over home occupation. So Nolan and I have talked, this is something we can start the process and then over the month, we'll have a little more information on different parts of this as well.
So when you talk about a home occupation, you mean the amount of parking spaces, amount of use,
All gotta be part and parcel of it.
usage, et cetera?
Yeah, right now, there's two different types of home occupations that are allowed in residential. There's the one, number one occupation, which is allowed. We don't have to go to M P C. It, it talks about it in the top. There are only so many cars there at a time, stuff like that. And then there's the number two, which it gives some fairly good rules on too. But then there's all the general rules that sort of apply to both of them, but aren't really that clear and that's where some of the decisions and the problems come from. So we need to kind of look at those and revamp them, make them clearer, make them specific.
Yeah. Counselor Sob.
Just to clarify, we have different elements of this presentation you're making, Nolan, with respect to the home occupancy business, the general wording of things that need to be cleaned up, which in my mind is like, yeah, go ahead and do that.
Yeah.
And then we have the C can thing. And so we started with Counselor Court who said no.
I say no.
I say no.
No.
So there you have it. Nobody wants C cans.
Okay, that's fine. We can just keep it the way it is with C cans.
Thank you.
Because we had discussed this twelve years ago in that council.
For six months.
That was, I only brought these up because they, they are some of the things that we're having problems with and people are requesting and they're putting in without asking and I'm having to get them out and all that kind of stuff, so.
And that way you can blame us. It's all good.
I just tell them it's in the bylaw. This is the way it is.
Absolutely. It's all good. Was there anything else? Awesome.
Okay. And see what you do with the home occupation. Uh, the Clearview Triangle, did you want to decide on that before I leave? Or do you want to look at it?
Let's leave it for discussion.
Okay, yep.
Let's leave it for discussion if that's okay.
Yeah, we haven't even actually opened it yet, so
Okay.
once we get the direction we want, you guys want us to go, then we'll, we'll draft it up and
Awesome.
get an actual schedule A. Right now, you have a schedule A, but it
Right.
has some of the stuff in it.
Thank you. We appreciate you. All you do for the town. Thank you.
Thanks, Nolan.
All right, our next delegation appears just walked in. We'll have Mr. Delbert Beazer come on up. He rep, he's speaking to us on association proposal for the golf course. Welcome.
Welcome to you guys too. Busy night, it looks like on the agenda.
It's busy.
Not that you're talking taxes and bylaw, mill rate or anything, but I believe you all got a copy of my email and so I don't think I need to read it again to you. I just like to express the reasoning that I feel like forming a golf association again important. Back, uh, back when the golf course was sold and the bishop and their company were gonna turn into eighteen hole course. That's the last time that there was an effective membership of the golf association. Since then, there hasn't been a golf membership. Uh, we haven't had golf leagues. We haven't had member and volunteer participation until this year. Alex has been doing a good job trying to organize some things and so I just feel like it's time now that the town's taken this back and operating it that we should look at that opportunity to form another association. And I don't do it because I want a bunch more work. I do it because I see it as benefiting the town and the golf course in a number of ways. You sell memberships up there now, but it's a membership to what? Really, all it is is an annual pass to golf. There's no buy-in of the, being a member of the golf, golf course or the golf association. So I think there's some merit there to have. Many of you have been on local service boards, lines, clubs, rotary clubs, kinsman clubs, whatever they are. And you know, when you're a member of them, you serve more effectively. And so I think volunteer efforts would go up. I, I believe we could form a committee uh, that could start fundraising for a building there and get a clubhouse built sooner than later. Uh, not that council's not trying to. I know you are, but you've got two buildings, capital projects on your proposal. One of them will get shelved for a time. I don't know which one it will be, but that's just how councils work. I've been there, so. Jeff would like to see them both, I'm sure, as the administrator and just slap the money down to do it, but. So I would just like council's blessing to pursue it. I don't, uh, the way I see it looking, we, we have to, there's still a Carson Golf Association registered with the the nonprofit associations, but it hasn't been active. Uh, it can be reactivated or we can call it something else. Friends of the Lee Creek Golf, golf club has been floated around. I, I think there's, the name can be chosen, however, we need to choose it. Once it's chosen and registered, there has to be a, a board of directors and an executive with that application. And I don't want to go to all that work if council's gonna say, well, we don't recognize you as a, as a charity group or nonprofit group in Carson to work with the town. Uh, so if we get the council's blessing to go ahead with that, once they're registered, then we would sit down with Jeff, just like the Rotary Club sits down with Jeff and discusses spray parks or Lions Park Playground or whatever, and discuss the clubhouse. And decisions will be made then by the golf executive, who, some of them may be in the association as directors. I'm not sure what the form, you know, this, how that would be made up at this time, so. But I just feel like I need council's blessing to continue to work on it. If not, if there's no, if there's no blessing from council, then we'll just let the town go on and build the clubhouse when you have money. But I think that we can, with a membership, I think I can get corporate donations, not just from town, but out of town to help build that clubhouse. We'll be able to get volunteers to, I've had a number of contractors already approached me, say they're willing to work. If we start it late this fall and got it closed in, there's lots of volunteer hours that can be spent doing the finishing inside over the winter. So, um, the proposal for what type of clubhouse would be, uh, there's all kinds of clubhouses and Jeff's researched this and, uh, we would consider more of a modest clubhouse than a extremely, like, we don't think we can, we can probably build something for around seven hundred thousand. That would be a real nice clubhouse. We would use the existing, uh, probably use the existing, not the clubhouse, but the, the basement that's there because it's structurally sound and extend to the, to the southeast over the edge of the hill. And there's lots of different scenarios, whether to do a basement or just pour it on slab, uh, just as a walk-in ground level building, so. That can all be discussed by the committee and the golf association later. I'm not the one that wants to make that decision.
Thank you. Mayor. Counselor Sob.
Okay. Delbert, thanks for coming. Like, we've had conversations about this, so I just want to make it clear for councils. So you're asking that the golf association run the golf course and fundraise?
No.
No?
So right now, I see the golf association being formed to build a clubhouse.
Okay.
As a future consideration,
Right.
it may be an option for the town to look at that as operating the, as the golf course, as we did two years ago, you know, when we suggested that, that method, but for right now, it'd be strictly to have a membership, have a golf league, you know, run those kind of things. Um, definitely help with corporate events.
Right.
Volunteers should be there helping with those corporate events rather than staff trying to do it, so.
So the way you envision it is the, the day-to-day operation of the golf course would be like it is now and the golf association would be strictly there to build a clubhouse and then we'll look at this going forward?
Yep. I mean, if we, if we form the association and you're five, or how many is on the committee? Yeah, you know, let's say they all wanted to be directors, uh, on that, on that nonprofit. Then whether that committee would just change rules and work under the association's mandate with the town, I don't, that would be something to be discussed later.
Okay.
Mayor.
Okay, you answered some of my questions. My question was exactly that. You view yourself then as a fundraiser?
Primarily, yep, yep.
For the golf course?
Yep.
And so you view it just with your membership separate as an entity from the town? Is that the way you view it at this time?
Yep. So I think like any project that the town's approached to build, whether it's a playground or a splash park or whatever, there's
There's a participation.
There's participation from both, right? And, uh, we anticipate that we would like to build that clubhouse with no monetary participation from the town, except some groundwork. So there's some studies, Jeff mentioned, there's some stability of the hill studies that would need to be done. You know, those kind of things, uh, would, are something that would benefit the town. The town would want to make sure those are done correctly.
Yeah.
And so there may be some initial costs like that that we would look at the town to help with, but everything else we would hope to have funded.
So right now, your mandate will be strictly a fundraising model?
Yep.
Counselor Bengry.
Delbert, this past weekend, I had the opportunity to be in Calgary. I drove past a beautiful golf course, which is closed due to construction of a clubhouse. And they had volunteers, they had memberships, they had corporate donations, and yet it's closed the golf course and it's a beautiful golf course.
Yeah, and I, I think if you read into the more of the reports, it's actually a real estate decision.
Well, it, it was a real estate decision.
Golf course land is worth more than keeping the golf club going.
But, but you consider what you're, what you're saying out here, that's almost a real estate decision also.
Well, it could be. I'd love to call it the Atkins Golf Clubhouse. They'd help him with sales around the golf course.
So when I, when I hear your pitch, when I hear what you're saying, it reminds me of kind of how we designed the soccer club and how we got our soccer field.
Yep.
We kind of were there to drum up businesses, get sponsors, being a non-for-profit under the umbrella of the town. It's safe, it worked well, and because of that, we were able to build our one point five million dollar soccer field.
Yep.
So you're envisioning a similar relation, is my understanding. So to be clear, because we've heard lots of things through the grapevine, it's not hiring and firing. It is solely, your focus is a clubhouse and drumming up people to come and use our facility.
Yep.
Okay.
That's the primary purpose. Down the road.
Right. Reassess.
Yeah, reassess with the town and the town.
But for now, that's where you're at.
Your model now to fund, you do what you're doing with the town, you may say we don't want to deal with employees anymore.
Well, we're in our first year.
Yeah, you're in your first year, so.
Exactly.
Yeah, no, definitely, that's something down the road that, uh.
Counsel, counsel, anybody else?
What I, what I would just say in closing, I was on council when we bought the golf course back. Uh, we bought that back not to have a golf course, not because I'm a golfer. We bought it back because it was too valuable a real estate to lose for the town. Not just for potential development, but for another facility, another recreational thing that people can have in town. And so I looked at the golf course the same as the town pool, the ice rink. They all cost the town taxpayers money. And I applaud the council for, uh, putting some capital towards the golf course this year. Because there's no reason that the town shouldn't be contributing, just like they do the other facilities, so.
Thank you very much.
Yep. I brought a picture of Foremost Golf Club. They build a very modest clubhouse there for about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Not to say that's the, that's the plan or whatever, but anyways, I just brought a picture of it. Yeah, I grew up two of them, actually. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming. We appreciate it.
Thanks, Delbert.
I wouldn't mind living there.
I understand, you don't put as much into golf course and to clubhouse. Why is it seven hundred thousand? I can build my house for four hundred and fifty.
Okay, so.
Can I just answer this? I think, Tim, the biggest expense you're gonna find in that clubhouse is the kitchen.
Yeah.
You're gonna have to build.
We need an industrial kitchen.
Building it to grade.
An industrial kitchen is extremely expensive.
I figured.
Okay, so let's move along. Adoption of minutes from our meeting of April the second, two thousand and nineteen, Counselor.
I'll make a motion to adopt the minutes of April second, two thousand and nineteen.
All in favor? Thank you. All right, six, bylaw and policies. So we are going to hand this over to Jeff in regards to the mill rate and the draft bylaw.
We're on six A right now?
We are.
We are.
Is that this one here?
Yes, I gave you a paper copy as well.
Okay.
And I'm going to apologize upfront for a couple pieces that are gonna be terribly confusing.
The small lettering?
Well, that, but there's only about a half a dozen changes, so I didn't want to go through a bunch of eleven by seventeens. Why it's a little bit confusing if you're going through and trying to reconcile is you passed a December budget. We talked about a bunch of amendments in April, but didn't pass that budget. And then we've amended the April amendments in a couple of places. But bear with me, I think we're gonna be okay. So, um, what I actually would like to do first is I gave you, um, another sheet that looks like this and it's got the breakdown of the assessment classifications. And because that really gives the background for the very first line in the budget. And what we are proposing to you, counsel, I'll, I'll give the moral of the story first, is that you leave your, well, this budget is built on the mill rate being the same as last year. You have additional assessment, which is getting two point three percent revenue over last year. So what I wanted to show you, um, is on that sheet, you can see the commercial uh, from twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen is seeing a four point six percent increase. And the, the next chunk, actually, it's on the wrong line. It looks like it's at the total, the, all the linear stuff, wells and pipelines, internet, all that is a one point nine percent increase and then residential at one point seven is a percentage increases. So if we leave the mill rate as last year, now there's some small tweaks to the school and the home for the aged taxes, but we're gonna talk about that too because we're estimating the the schools still, and you saw that letter down in the correspondence, that we've been waiting a couple weeks, 'cause we assumed we'd get an education requisition, and we didn't.
We're flock shooting.
Yeah, we're, we're taking a wild stab at, what's a reasonable increase? So, yeah. So when you take those changes in assessment in those categories, and we add that assessment over on the budget, what that gives us is a two point three percent increase in revenue over twenty eighteen. And so that's what we built the budget on. I know when we talked a few months ago, we talked about an inflationary type of piece, two percent, somewhere in that ballpark, and, uh, so we feel we're really close by leaving the mill rate static. Um, just so you know how it's built, the, the, uh, the home for the aged was like, um, like a tenth of a percent up on the residential side, and a little bit down on the commercial side, and same thing with how we have education, so overall, mill rate was just a tiny, I think, three tenths of a percent, uh, down on commercial, when you factor in education and home for the aged, and the residential was just a touch above that, when you factor in resident, or education and home for the aged. So that's the first green lines on your budget, if we go back to that. Is, is there any questions on this category, the assessment categories? We didn't have Morgan come and present this year, partially because he didn't ask and we forgot, was a lot of it. It's actually unusual for him, he said, to come to councils and present the assessment changes. So, uh, it didn't come up, and, and so we just put that together quickly.
Jeff, can I just ask you, under residential, so we have twelve hundred seventy-nine houses with people living in it, the vacant, is that vacant houses, or is that vacant lots?
Or lots.
Is that the lots?
Yeah.
So that's the one that people pay a yearly-
They might be paying a minimum tax implication?
Minimum.
Is that seventy-five dollars, Jill? Yeah, yeah.
So that's an awful lot of property.
We have a lot of subdivided, if you look at Ellison's alone, up top, between what Say Jones now and what's left, there's fifty-four lots that are subdivided vacant up there.
Wow.
Because phase two has never even been entertained yet, but it was subdivided a long time ago. So Gordon Atkins has thirty-three lots, um, uh, Mount Meadow Estates has the rest of the developments all subdivided.
Yeah.
So when you start looking at those pockets, there are large parcels that are subdivided already, but there are ways from development.
Counselor Bangle?
Jeff, in the commercial on this paper here-
Yep.
It shows twenty eighteen and one forty-eight properties, and one forty-three in twenty nineteen, and yet your assessment is, is up.
Because the values are up.
Yeah, so, some of the new values had, sorry, some of the new buildings had a high value, but actually, I was quizzing on this right before the meeting, trying to get my head around it too, and I can't actually reconcile the development permits with that.
Right.
So, it could have been some changes in how Morgan assessed them, so the methodology of assessment may have been a little bit different, because, yeah, counselor, if, I can't tell you what makes up those five, I actually don't know.
Okay.
I was looking for it before the meeting, and I couldn't get my head around it before the meeting.
And I think that's one reason why we-
So, sorry, if I, if I could, uh, Counsel Brown, commercial has lesser properties, which the properties didn't go anywhere.
Right.
You know, necessarily, we didn't lose commercially zoned properties necessarily.
Do you see what we're doing?
It could be a matter of the houses that have commercial businesses in them, and that code has just been removed from the-
The business is no longer in the house.
Okay, okay. So they changed a home occupation over the year, I see. Okay, that could be part of it.
Yeah.
And then, in twenty eighteen, we did gain, for example, the home hardware addition, that assessment came on stream in twenty eighteen, um, some of KFC, but not much, it wasn't very well, very much assessment at twenty eighteen, December, but there was a couple of high-value, uh, Torres Salt made a large improvement.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, Chief Mountain Gas did a big renovation, so we, we had some fairly large assessment increases on the same amount of properties as well.
Hmm.
Okay? So I just wanted to show you that, to know how we got to the revenue on the budget.
Good.
So on the budget document, and I do recognize if, if the font's small, Counselor Barnes, start pinching, start pinching on your screen, yeah, there you go, get the screen going.
I'm already there.
Um, so we let the, we've got the mill rate riding to give you two point three percent, we, on the school tax, we simply kept it at two percent, and I have honestly, counsel, I've heard everything from no change to twelve percent. I've heard everything in between.
I watch our A U M A clippings, and they, they don't know how to deal with it.
No, everybody's just taking a guess. Now, what you do there, just so you know, is if you under levy, you then add the difference next year, or if you over levy, you credit the difference to next year.
Yeah, I mean, it's no fun.
You still have to pay them, don't get me wrong.
Yeah.
You don't, you don't get any credit or terms, you still have to pay them, but-
So you're suggesting to leave it alone?
Yeah, because any number is purely hyper, I, I have no rationale to tell you one number over another.
Okay.
But you, you chose two percent, from what I saw.
Because that's what we ha, that's what we built all the way up through.
Right, that's what I saw, right?
Yep. So it has a two percent.
Yeah.
And we already had actuals on home for the aged, so there's no change there.
So, the only thing I see here is that we don't know for certain is the, the, the school residential, 'cause you say you haven't, we're just going, based on what we did in the past, and with a modest increase.
Yep. And so, I, I can't, you know, people, oh, we're hearing these big numbers, I just can't envision a new government coming in and saying, let's, let's crank up-
Oh, no.
-school tax by twelve percent. I could be wrong. Now, the other thing that's happened even since we prepared this, is the province has announced that they are going to present a budget, but not till the fall.
That's right.
See, I was actually anticipating maybe an early spring budget, pre-election, and that didn't happen, and we've seen before where the governments turned around a quick budget, but the, the U C P has said, no, we're not even gonna touch it now until-
Counselor Salk?
Um, I know this isn't really within the realm of this, but they've also said they're free, they're freezing the CARES grants, so.
Yeah, CARES was, announced today that it was off, it was off until reviewed.
Thank you, that's great.
Yeah.
Just lovely.
And, and I think that will be a common notice over the next little while. I think we should be prepared to hear that in different areas, that they're gonna hold on more granting until they can review it, but we'll see. So, those are, um, there is one small change in the M S I capital that we're bringing in to the budget, and I'll, I'll talk a little bit more about that. What that is, is we dropped our capital, which we'll get to, by about ninety-five thousand, because we were going to buy an asphalt and concrete crushing attachment. We rented it for a couple weeks, and it just didn't work.
Hmm.
It just didn't perform, and so we're proposing to go back to reserving money each year, and then every other year, bringing in that great big outfit, and he does a couple mountains of asphalt and concrete for us, and I'll, I'll show you that in here, but because we had freed up a little bit of, that was M S I funded, by the way.
Mm-hmm.
And so, what you'll see is, Bart wants to make some improvements on the corner of Home Seekers and Second Avenue, to that road, and so we have some money in here for that. So we've brought some M S I in to fund that, that you'll see a little bit later, only twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So I'll show you that here as we get along down the road here.
I mean, I told you so, that's best.
It's bad.
Really, the only thing on page two is simply the expects, it's expense side of the school requisition, that's it.
Hmm.
And we've, we've talked about that considerably. On page three, the only change is down on two, three, two, five, oh, one, which is what I just mentioned, road improvements from Ninth Ave to Home Seekers, so, um, to get some work done on there, and then we need to screen it, we don't have any screened top soil right now, and so Boss Capes can bring in this great big conveyor belt screener, and just hammer out a ton of screened soil in a short time. We've tried to construct little grates and shake it through, and they just have a heck of a machine, and so we'd like to get a new great big pile of screened soil. Um, page four-
Oh, before you go on, I see screened top soil. That pile that's out the west end of town, that's ours, right? It just has to be screened, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it's just raw, it's got rocks and grass.
They would just come in and clean that up for us, so we'd have good soil.
They back right up to it, and their machine just starts pulling out of there, and it kicks all the waste off one side, and a clean soil on the other side.
So we've got what we need, really.
We've got lots of raw soil, yeah, lots and lots.
Counselor Salk?
Um, Jeff, there was a concern expressed, and I think we'd mentioned it before, about maybe doing some improvements on Second Avenue West.
West.
Right to the bypass.
Oh, yeah.
Doing the Southeast Asian-
Yeah.
-asphalt.
Yeah. How very politically correct of you. Yeah.
We're good on Twelfth Street.
Oh, you guys gotta find a better name for this thing?
I know.
I think so.
I've gotta find the actual name of this stuff, I really do.
Wow, nice.
Rhino sounded better.
Road emulsion, something. Um, yeah, we don't have that specifically in there, counselor, and actually, I hadn't thought about that for a bit, it's not specifically in there, but let me just look at something. I think we also had, so we have Seventh Avenue West, uh, we don't have much in there, it's very little, and, yeah, there's not much in there. Um, one of the things interesting about that section is it's currently for sale.
Right.
And so I'm curious if we'll be digging it up for utility soon, too. No service lines in there?
The one on Second Avenue?
Yeah, West, it's for sale.
Which one?
So from Wooden Creations to Twelfth Street.
That Weston's?
Yeah.
Weston Property.
Yeah, they just put it up for sale, I don't know what'll happen with it.
Who owns that?
Weston's, the Weston family.
Oh, that's the one, okay.
So we could, um, so we got a couple of options there, we can see what we need to spend on Seventh and Second, um, and see if there's any leftover, even just lighter dust abatement might be a good thing there.
Okay.
Um, or we can do a council-approved capital motion as we get into the year, and see how we're doing.
Why, why don't we see what will happen with that possible sale, and see what comes out of it?
Yeah, who knows the timing on it, I would have no clue.
Maybe dust abatement for this year would do.
Okay.
Might be.
While we're talking roads, and getting a little bit off the topic, I believe the council should write a letter to the province dealing with the Ninth Street over there, Ninth Avenue.
Can we do that, can we do that tonight?
They suggested back that we do that. Volker Stevan suggested we send a letter, that maybe they'll move on a little bit better.
Maybe let's take some pictures, too, attach them.
West of the bridge to the top of the hill. They need to stay right to-
Let's draft it tonight, and you can sign it.
Right to Donald Levitt's place, forget the top of the hill.
Counselor Barnes?
I'll take pictures.
I was out on the Highway five oh one West this afternoon, and I saw two guys from Volker Stevan dumping piles of asphalt, and they were just mixing it around and everything, and they're running their truck tires back and forth, I'm thinking, that's not gonna last long, a first good rainstorm come along, that'll be gone, I'm thinking, what a chitzy way to do something.
Since I kind of know what's going on, 'cause my son lost the form in there, they are patching it, you're right, 'cause it's so rough right now, and they've had the guy down, and they keep looking at it, and every year, they do the same thing over again.
Yes.
That's why they suggested that we write the count, the, the province, and do that road upright, 'cause it falls apart every year.
Terrible.
And there's a lot of traffic going up.
I'll draft it for next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Good.
Um, page four, this is one that we'll actually reference back here in a bit, so because we're not buying the gravel, the, the crushing attachment, we have historically reserved forty thousand dollars a year, and then spent eighty thousand every other year, is what we've done. So we've put that forty thousand dollar reserve back in here, and I'll show you how that's funded right near the end of it, um, and how we're gonna fund that. We had no changes on page five, we had no changes on page six. Uh, page seven is where I will show you how that's funded. So page seven, right at the bottom of operational, two nine four seven six two, this is our transfers to reserves. Um, we reduced the major utility capital reserve, it, to balance everything, it was forty-one thousand thirty-one dollars, but effectively forty thousand dollars, you're still reserving that full amount, you're just reserving forty of it in a different account than this one. So it's still going into reserves, but in a different account, so that's how we chose to make, we use this account to balance the, the doll, the pennies of the budget, so for four thousand dollars one way, well, we can increase or reduce that reserve account to make it come to zero, so that's why you see this really random forty-one thousand thirty-one dollar number. Um, and then the, the short story on capital, and again, this is where the numbers don't work, 'cause we're amending an amendment, so if you go to the next page, and then I'll come back to page eight, or seven, on page eight, two, three, two, seven, six, two, Public Works Capital Attachments, we've reduced the expense there by ninety-five thousand. And then, so what we have to do is look at, how was it funded, was it M S I funded, was it tax funded, and then on the page before, we have to adjust how much M S I we're bringing in to the capital budget to fund capital. Now, it looks like we're adding more M S I, and we're reducing an expense, but that's because in December, that M, or in December, that number was lower, in April, it was way higher, and because we're amending an amendment, it looks a little odd, but, uh, I, I assure you that we are using less M S I than in the budget you approved in December, because we're not buying those attachments.
So where's that going to go, then, that money?
So you have an M S I surplus account that revolves, is what happens with it.
It's added every year.
They're not gonna come and claw it back off of us?
No, that is ours to keep.
Yeah, we always do that. What, what we do in the budget, in fact, this is different from four years ago. What used to happen is we used to put one hundred percent of the M S I in the budget, and then we would reserve any we didn't spend, and what Hawken does now is he simply only puts in what we're spending, and then we deal with that little surplus at the provincial level, because we don't actually receive the money, it was a bit of a false tale of revenue, 'cause we only get what we spend.
Ah.
We don't get it all, and then give it back.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
They hold it.
Okay.
Yeah, so we do it that way, 'cause it more, it actually reflects the actual revenue.
Mayor?
Jeff, that is the budget that's coming up, but now that we had some presentations, I am wondering, is there, for example, an account for other which we could satisfy the needs, maybe, for the, uh, projects that is there?
Right.
Or with the, the Blaine Jensen is not a large amount, but it's still an amount.
Yeah, that one doesn't concern me too much, of counsel, which is to satisfy, but the other one's a bit bigger, most of all.
Yeah, right, and so, here we, we have to kind of realize, is there an account that has some reserve, is that the reserves a discretionary from council, that that would come out of, if we were to put an amount?
So you've got a hundred thousand dollars in count, what we call council-approved capital, it's your discretion throughout the year, a lot of times, we use it for emergent things, but we have other reserves, if it's an emergency, so you have council-approved capital of a hundred, and you have thirty of council-approved operating.
Right, so this is why it's important for, to know, for us to know, if the community foundation, what, what would be the proportion that they would be looking at, I, I do not know.
I don't know, I don't know either.
But I remember them saying there is that extraordinary project of funding.
She made a request of how much she's asking for.
No, when, and the mayor and I have met with this group before, they're, they're thinking about seventy-five, I, I think there's gonna be a couple other little pieces that also that'll need to be done, maybe it's cement work, maybe it's a few other little things, um, so no, we don't know what the school division's thinking they're supporting it with, we, we don't know any of that yet.
Counselor Salk?
It would seem to me that initially our skin in the game is the land. And then we go from there. Because I don't think we want to go anything beyond that to start with. Because I'd like to see what they do in terms of fundraising. Then if we need to top it up, because right now we're, we're donating the land. And once we do that, that piece of property is largely gone.
Gone, yeah.
It's tough to sell that for a commercial use or.
What could you do with this thing?
Would you need to have some discussion whether you feel that's appropriate too?
Hold on a second. It's, it's like a rest stop.
Yeah, that's right.
And that's really what it's been used for and that's historically what it would be, has been, it probably will be. However, it is still our land and we're donating it. So that's our skin in the game to start with.
Well, yeah, I think we can do better than that.
Well, we can.
Counselor Drew? Oh, Counselor Court.
Uh, I, to, to satisfy your concern about fundraising, Ramona, big head, is going to help them fundraise big time. She said so and will do so. I trust that she will come through with it. The, uh, school board is going to put a fairly substantial chunk inside there.
Mrs. Anna Joyce Frank kind of suggested that the school board would be on side.
It's going to really be a significant donation. So we have the land, but I think if that was to come to the, the financial, I mean, $10,000 or less, I'm sure we can do something.
Counselor Bangle.
I'm locked with, uh, Counselor Silk. I want to see before I do.
Counselor Silk.
Just to be clear, I have no issue with us helping out if there needs to be some time. But also recognize that we donate the land and we have the ongoing costs of upkeep of that land. And we'll be doing the beautifying around it and we'll be planting and we'll be doing all the other stuff.
I, I hear you and I'm sure we can do a lot of in kind for the preparation of the site.
One thing I wanted to look on that site, and I know we're in budget, but talking about that site. I want to look at where the water levels went on the 1 and 50 and 1 and 100 years on that.
That's the problem.
Counselor Bangle and then Counselor Barnes.
You know, I drive Main Street every day, probably four or five times a day and in the evenings. And that site is a fantastic site for our, our visitors coming into this community, stopping, getting out, having a picnic with their motorhomes, whatever, and being able to walk up Main Street and back to that site. Where else have we got in this town for that, that kind of stuff to stop?
Counselor Barnes.
My initial thought was what you were just bringing up is I recall the river flooding there.
Safety of it, right.
And it came right almost to the entrance of the driveway. And that whole parking lot buckled and it had to be replaced. And it was almost to the street. So it would have to be on a high, a higher plane.
So should we, should we finish talking about the budget and then, because we are going to come back.
Back to your business arising from delegations, yeah.
So let's, let's try and wrap this up.
Well, that's really what I had for changes. And so we can transition right into 6B. Which is, what you have in front of you is the proposed mill rate bylaw.
Right.
And aside from the, the little change on home for the aged, it's exactly what 2018 was as far as the mil, the municipal portion of the mill rate is precisely the same. Um, which gets you a 2.3%. So we must pass that next week. So if you have an issue with it, I really need to know now. Because we have to get notices out by the end of the month. And we waited a little bit for this education requisition that didn't come. So I'd be more than happy if, just to get a bit of a feel around the table of, yeah, we like this. Go ahead and, and bring it for all three readings next week.
Mayor?
Personally, I would, uh, I would feel comfortable to recommend to council to pass the mill rate as presented.
I'd, I'd, yeah, I'd be comfortable with the first reading and then do second one.
Well, you can't tonight. You don't have that option tonight.
Right.
You recommend it.
So I will be requesting all three in the one meeting.
I made a recommendation.
There's your recommendation, yeah.
Sorry, Counselor Court.
I, I have no problem with that. I'm just thinking down the road if we are looking at some pretty good sized capital projects. Do we stick it to them next year on it or do we do a little bit this year? But we don't really know what we're doing, so I guess we really can't increase with a project that we think is going to happen.
You cannot justify it.
Counselor Barnes?
You really can't.
Yeah, I know.
Oh, Counselor Bangle. Jeff, on, uh, on the tourism marketing, uh, on page five, 262333, we've still got the Chautauqua.
Yep.
At $14,000. Can you explain that?
So that's the last year commitment for that financing. So this is going to be the last play and the last work for the fourth community in this year.
That's better, Counselor Court. There's quite a sigh right there.
And, and I don't believe that that organization will look like it does right now.
No, there's going to be a change going on right now.
All right.
Yeah.
No, it's, it was a cycle, a four year cycle. There's a fourth year and it's going to be in Raymond and Sterling.
This year.
Yeah.
Counselor Silk.
Jeff, just for my own curiosity, just humor me here, would you?
Sure, of course.
The wobbly pup in, uh, Public Works Capital?
Yeah, what is it?
Explain that one to me.
So it is a.
It's a wobbly pup, not a wobbly pop, right?
No, it's not. I never thought about that. I'll have to ask Bart if that's what he was thinking about. A wobbly pup is what they pull behind a tandem and it's loaded with weight when they go over roads, when they're compacting them.
Oh, okay.
So it's, it's got like, uh, probably like 20 tires, solid rubber tires all the way across it.
Yeah.
And they put boulders and cement chunks and, and they fill it full of stuff and then drag it behind with a loader or a tandem.
I wouldn't think with all that weight to be too wobbly.
I don't know why it's called a wobbly, but.
Jeff, did you have anything else for us?
No, that's it. I'll bring that back first. We'll bring the bylaw back for next week.
For first reading.
For all three.
Yeah.
I thought we were going around the table just to give a consensus on.
Well, you actually have a recommendation.
You have a motion on the table.
Motion on the table. Any questions?
Motion or recommendation?
Recommendation, yeah, I've got it here.
Seeing none? All in favor?
Okay.
We're good.
And this sounds like you're all stuck.
Good timing.
Do we want to take a break now or do we want to continue on for a few minutes?
I want to eat chicken molotov.
So we're going to do 7A.
I had whole chicken today already.
Okay, we're going to turn the time over to the mayor.
Good.
For just a minute, please. Yeah, we know people.
Get your phones out.
We need to have you here.
Come on out, Jeff.
Come to the front. Right up over here, by the flag.
To be next to. Do that. Jeff has completed, Jeff, come over here. Jeff has completed a course with the University of Alberta School of Business, Executive Education and Indigenous Partnership Development Program. And I'm pleased and really proud of Jeff to have completed that because he learned a lot and passed on that knowledge where, to me, and it will freely pass it along to his, uh, organization. And not only that, he was the only one representing municipalities in that course. So kudos.
We'd better do some pictures, man. They got their phones out.
I could have gotten to work that hard in high school.
I have my phone at home.
I was in your social class and it wasn't pretty. You know that. No, I'll just, it was a really good course. Um, I appreciate counsel letting me go take it. And StanTech, as you remember, paid the tuition portion. So I've made sure to thank their representatives. I sent them an email actually even just last week again to, I don't know who, her position there, but that's who they told me to, to take. So there'll be a few things that we'll start to implement here soon. Um, over the next few weeks, I've got some implementation ideas, particularly for our website. And also our internal and elected official training on, on Indigenous history and the local context as well. So a few things coming along.
Good. Thank you.
Thanks for making us better.
Most, most of the people that were there were from the, the industrial.
Industry from most part.
Industrial world.
Okay, so I think we will now take a five minute break. Can I have a motion?
Move to recess.
Snuff that food really quick.
Sorry, 10 minute break? Counselor Silk.
I'll move to recess for 10 minutes.
Thank you. All in favor?
You know, I talked to CARE.